Robert, do you want to?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good morning and welcome back. This time we'll go back to the code for processing.
Item number one pursuant to government code section 54657B1 Public Employment. Title Planning Director, there was no reportable board action. Item number two pursuant to government code section 54957.6 Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiators Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to Judge Legent. I cannot get video because the host is disabled to me. Is there something y'all are trying to tell me?
Maria, go ahead and try it now. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we do the pledge. Judge Legent certified the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, where liberty and justice for all. Next is staff announcement. Are there any staff members that wishes to comment at this time? And I'm checking the chat.
I do not see any staff members at this time.
I don't see anything either. I don't see any heads nodding. Okay, so we'll move on to general public comment. If there's any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on a consult or other agenda, may it be addressed in the public comment page. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board's supervisors. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
And is there anyone trying to call in that we're missing?
There's nobody showing up at this time, no.
Okay. Next is consult agenda. As a reminder to board members, we will have to do a roll call. So just keep that in mind when we go forward after the motion. So there's one item on the consult code.
Item number three is an action item from the administrative office. Declare vehicles and equipment as surplus and subject to disposal and authorize the county administrative officer to dispose of the vehicles and equipment pursuant to county code.
Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, with that, is the motion. We'll move. It's the second.
Second, Madam Chair.
And with that, I do a roll call. Robert, do you want to do the roll call?
Yes, and we certainly will. I'll go in district order if that's okay?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Aye.
Supervisor Stopper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, if we move on to other agenda, code.
Item number four is an informational item from Environmental Management Agency to receive a presentation regarding the environmental health department programs.
Ms. Medina?
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective board members, county council. Looks like we have everybody online today. Assistant, excuse me, Assistant Deputy CAO Summer Nikotero and Deputy Clerks of Boards. Today, I will be sharing a little bit about our Environmental Management Agency. And in order to do that, I'm going to be sharing my screen now. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can see that.
Great, thank you. So under our Environmental Management Agency, we have five departments, including the Agriculture Department, Air Pollution Control, Animal Services, Environmental Health, and On-Site Waste Water. Today, I'll be sharing a little information, little tidbits, about our Environmental Health Department and our On-Site Waste Water. A lot of times, people associate our department with food inspectors only, but we have so many different programs that are involved and fall under our EMA umbrella. And the purpose and goal of Environmental Health and our On-Site Waste Water Department is to protect the environment. We do this by providing education, prevention, inspection, and enforcement activities if needed. Our strong emphasis is on education. This is accomplished by staff implementing state, federal, and local ordinances, laws, and regulations. Here you see some pictures of our staff in doing some inspections. At the top left, we are conducting a recreational and food inspection at actually a camp. In the middle, you can see one of our inspectors actually doing an on-site waste water inspection. And on the right, we are picking up waste tires from the public right-of-way. So incorporated under our Environmental Health Department are over seventeen programs. We have primarily the Food Protection Program. A lot of times, people always associate us with health inspections or food facility inspections, but it's so much more. We also inspect not only the brick and mortar facilities, but we also inspect special events such as farmers' events, farmers' markets events, and events that take place like such as Fog Town. We also inspect mobile food units, those food trucks that we are also fond of. Recreational Health. We have oversight and inspection of recreational health, which includes public swimming pools and spas. These are typically located at hotels and motels, even some of our high schools. Our next program is Body Art. We have several Body Art tattoo parlors within Calaveras County. Organized camps, that's always one of our favorites. The such camps as Camp Rensies and Camp Old Bell. Our Solid Waste under Title 27. Our staff inspect solid waste sites, including Rock Creek landfill and our transfer stations. Under our Waste Tire Program, we are required to obtain a grant from Cal Recycle annually in order to implement this program. We typically will pick up tires, you know, from the roadways along with public works. And we also collaborate and coordinate with our other departments, code enforcement and building, so they can let us know if there are any waste tires that are on our public right-of-ways. We also inspect waste tire facilities, facilities that generate waste tires. Those include shops, tire shops, and we have one here in San Andreas. Our next program is commercial cannabis cultivation. We collaborate and communicate with our Cannabis Control Department in the evaluation of applications that come in to our office. Water wells. So most of us, if we live in the rural area, we have one of these in our backyard. On-site waste water. Again, if we live in the rural area, we have one of these on-site waste water systems underground in our backyard or front yard. Land use. We work closely with our Planning and Building Department to evaluate and to process applications and to expedite applications so we can get business here in Calaveras County. We are a local primacy agency for our state's small public water systems. We are also a certified unified program agency, a COOPA, which became certified by Cal EPA in 2002. Under the COOPA program, we have several different program elements, including hazardous materials. These are located at businesses that typically will have threshold limits of fifty-five gallons more of hazardous materials on site, two hundred cubic feet of inert gas such as acetylene, and/or five hundred pounds of solids. We want to know how they handle their hazardous waste, or if they do generate hazardous waste. Typically, you will see driving down the road. You won't see, of course, the underground storage tanks because they're underground, but that is another program that we facilitate under our COOPA program along with our above-ground petroleum storage, our Hazardous Material Response Plan. This has to do with actually the response of businesses. How do they handle their hazardous materials that are on site? Do they have an area where their employees can meet in case there's emergency? And last but not least, our California Accidental Release Program, which we no longer have any facilities under this program, and tiered permitting. So the first program I'm going to be discussing is our food program. And this is food protection. Again, a lot of times, people outside of our little group here associate health inspectors with food facilities only. But it's just, it's more than that. As you can see by some of these pictures, these are some pictures that were taken by inspection staff. They might not necessarily be here in Calaveras County, but we wanted to give you an idea of what we look at and why we look at things. Our inspection staff are registered environmental health specialists and/or environmental health specialists. We have to have certain certifications in order to conduct these inspections. To go through this type of process, typically our staff, our inspection staff have degrees in either biology or chemistry, chemistry, physiology, and/or health science. And we have to actually submit our transcripts to the state of California, even to get a training letter approved by them. Once that training letter is approved, we have to put in so much time according to how many units of science or math we have taken during our stint with California colleges or any other college. But on to more things. We like to provide education. Education is our primary tenet here at Environmental Health and EMA overall. Without education, people can't make the right decisions to move their operations and move their processes and to make those commitments to our community. The primary reason why we do this is for the prevention of foodborne illnesses. When we conduct an inspection, we do this on an annual basis. We talk to the employees, we talk to the owners and the operators, but we look for certain things. We provide education when we go into their facilities. These facility inspections are unannounced, so they do not know that we will be there on a particular day at any moment. And the reason why we do this is because we want to make sure that even where we're not there, even when no one's looking, everybody's doing the right thing. And overall, we have a really good community of food retail operators here in Calaveras County. But most importantly, the responsibility falls back on us is to provide the education so again, they can make the right decisions in order to run their operations efficiently and effectively and to be able to support our community. Along with the food protection, we not only inspect the brick and mortars, but we also inspect mobile food trucks. And some of our favorites are located throughout Calaveras County. We also inspect special events, such as the fog event and different things that take place throughout our community throughout the year. Halloween, you know, different events for Christmas, those types of things. Our next program is recreational health. This is typically associated with public pools and spas. What we look for are specific water quality issues. Is the pH correct in a pool? Is the clarity, can you see the bottom of the drain? Are the fences and the gates self-closing, are they secure? Is there lifesaving equipment located at the facility, such as a shepherd's hook and/or a life ring? We also look closely and evaluate the water quality and also the equipment. Is the equipment functioning correctly? Are the handbars and the handrails sturdy? Are they jiggly or can they, you know, can they cause an accident? And we do this by promoting health and safety and public safety as well. We also look at the water quality. Are there leaves or debris that are climbing up the recirculation equipment? You know, those are all things that we look at. The only time that we will truly close a pool is if there are, number one, no chemicals at all to prevent any disinfection in the pool water and/or there's a serious or life-threatening imminent hazard involved. Body art. We have several Body Art tattoo locations here in Calaveras County. And the primary reason why we have oversight and inspection is to make sure that the applicants, the operators of these types of businesses are educated on, number one, bloodborne pathogens. And that they also follow all the really strict guidelines implemented in the sanitation of their facility. This includes how to use the shark's needles. How are they sanitizing your equipment? What type of equipment are they using? Are they trained in the bloodborne pathogen training? Do they have vaccination status for hepatitis B? These are all questions that we ask. We also look at the structure of the facility. Do they have the right amount of disinfectant equipment, sanitary restrooms, that type of thing, handwashing sinks? Organized camps, this is one of our favorite. Because whenever we do an inspection of an organized camp, we get to do all kinds of things. We get to inspect the food facility, some of them have pools, and the water systems, the small public water systems. This program is run under this Telephonic Department of Public Health under their housing program. When we go do an inspection at one of our organized camps, we also look at their emergency evacuation plans. You know, a lot of these are located up in the woods. And we want to make sure that they have appropriate evacuation plans in case there is any type of emergency such as a fire. We also look at their housing accommodations. Believe it or not, we have to actually measure how far apart the cots are and where the restrooms are located. But not only that, we also look at things that might be, you know, unknown, overhead. Trees might be coming down. We also look at different structures and whether or not the safety is mostly adhered to and that the counselors and the people that are in charge have the appropriate certification. Our solid waste. Under Title 27, we have several solid waste inspection staff. We also have several solid waste sites here in Calaveras County, including Rock Creek landfill and several transfer stations that are located throughout Calaveras County. The reason why we inspect these solid waste sites is not only to ensure that the operations are running effectively and efficiently, but also to make sure that the staff that are on site are conducting normal operations in a safe manner. These might include making sure that the roads are being timed correctly, that they have people that are required to be trained, you know, at the site, that the transfer stations are operating efficiently. We might be looking at some of their record-keeping instruments. We also might be looking at how they cover their landfill very early in the morning as that is required by the statutes and the CCRs. We look at their site security. Can people access the site? Are the parameters of the site safe and secure? We look at litter control. How are they handling the medical waste that is dropped off by different constituents? We look at the parking structure. And we also look at the vectors, which include rats and mice and some other vectors, and how they control those types of intrusions. Waste tires. This is one of our programs that is kind of dear to my heart because it provides a service to our community and also brightens our community. Whenever our staff are out on inspections along the highways, if we see a tire on the side of the road, we stop and pick it up. We are trained by Cal Recycle. Every year, we have to go to Cal Recycle and submit an application for what we call a TEA grant. This year, our grant, we are asking for approximately thirty thousand, and hopefully, we will get that implemented soon. We inspect businesses that store waste tires on site, and those include the shops, as I discussed before. And also our landfills. We look at the waste tires there as they collect some of the tires that we bring in actually from the county sites. We also ensure that they are properly storing them, that they're not just piling them up in a random manner. We look at if they are storing them, can it make a hard ridge for mosquitoes? Can water collect in the tires and how they are storing them? We also look to our residents. If you have any tires that need to be removed, we ask that you sign a waiver for us to remove them. So that is a service that we will provide to our community as well. Water wells. As I stated before, almost every one of us that lives in this rural community, if we're not tied to one of our sanitary sewer and water districts, have a water well in their backyard. We ensure that these water wells are installed by a C-57 licensed well driller and that they meet all county setback requirements. So some of the setback requirements might be for less than five acres, ten feet from a property line, or any utility easement has to be ten feet. We also look at underground petroleum storage tanks that might be located within the vicinity, and those are required to be a hundred and fifty feet from the well that is being drilled. We look at the overall construction of the well. Now, here in Calaveras County, we go by the state standards. The well seal, which is twenty feet by definition, is from the top of the surface of the ground down twenty feet. Now, within this annular space, and I'm hoping that you can see here where my arrow is, but what happens is the well, the drill, the well is drilled. There's a picture in your mind, a big hole. So there is a side of the hole which is called the boring of the side wall of the well. And when the well drillers put in the well casing, the space between the well casing and that dirt-bore wall is called the annular space. Now, within that annular space, we actually have to seal that area to prevent groundwater, to prevent any contamination from going into that well surface. So typically, what will be put in that annular space is some type of cement seal and/or grout. Down at the bottom right-hand, you can see the final construction of a well. We also review water test results in order to finalize that well permit. And that is typically done with the results from nitrates, which is one of the water constituents that can cause methyleniemia in pregnant women if they drink over forty-five milligrams per liter on a continuous basis. So we need to make sure that we test for nitrates. We also test for total coliform. Coliform is something that is found in mammals. And typically, it is an indicator or can be an indicator of E. coli, which can really makes us really sick and possibly even cause death. Land use. We work closely with our planning and building departments in order to implement, facilitate, and process applications so we can get business moving in Calaveras County. We review the applications that come in through planning, and we make requirements such as installation of a well and/or septic. If the land use application comes in for the proposal of a new food facility in a rural area, we would make the requirements to install a water well and also a septic system. Now, these just aren't done primarily. We have to set conditions on that. So for example, for a septic system, if we know that the, that particular area is in need of a specific engineer-designed sewage disposal system, we have to do what we call profile holes in order to make that determination if it is going to be for a standard septic system and/or an engineered system. We also look at proposals for subdivisions, use permits, variances, and environmental impact reports. We also look to make sure that there is appropriate groundwater and aquifers to tap into. We are the local primacy agency for our state's all water systems. Several of our surrounding jurisdictions have given this program back to the state. But we feel that it's important to benefit and it benefits our community for us to have what I like to always like to call a finger on our pulse. So we have that interaction not only with our community, but with the owners and operators of these small public water systems. We provide technical assistance to the owners and the operators. And also, we work closely with what, who usually communicates with these owners of these systems are their designated operators. A lot of times, what will happen is during the rainy season, one of these systems might get a positive total coliform in which we have to respond accordingly and ensure that they disinfect the well appropriately according to our state laws and regulations. We also review their monthly and/or quarterly constituents for organic and chemistry backgrounds, which include inorganics and some even include the metals. We are a certified unified program agency, or COOPA. In order for us to conduct COOPA inspections, all of us have to be trained in HAZPA, which is our Hazardous Waste Operations and Emergency Response because we can be subjected and also have exposure to hazardous chemicals. So with that said, some of our staff are also ICC International Code Council certified to conduct inspections for their underground storage tanks, which I will review shortly here. So through our COOPA agency, as I reviewed in the very beginning of this presentation, we have several programs, including our hazardous material business plans. Again, these plans are set in place to ensure that the businesses that are handling the hazardous materials are aware of where they are keeping their hazardous materials. Are they compatible to where they are storing those materials? Are their employees trained? Are they trained to clean up the spill? Are they trained to be able to respond accordingly to call 911? What type of communication are they using to effectively make sure that their coworkers will not be put in any type of danger? They also have to keep records, continuous records. They also have to submit these types of records to our California Environmental Reporting System, which is SERS. This system actually looks at all the businesses that handle those hazardous materials, fifty-five gallons or more product, two hundred feet of inert gas such as acetylene, and five hundred pounds of solids. Those businesses that meet those thresholds are required to report to the California Environmental Reporting System. Our reporting commenced in January, January 1st, and ends on March 1st of this year. So for any businesses out there that might need some assistance, we are here for you and when we're here to help. Our inspection staff typically conduct inspections at these businesses every three years. However, for our underground petroleum storage tanks or gas stations, we have to conduct annual inspections. So this is one of my, one of my favorites, underground storage tanks. We recently took out old tanks from the Arnold, from Arnold area, the quick serve up there, probably a couple months ago, and they chose to install brand-new tanks. These new tanks have to meet certain requirements such as being double-walled. The tanks that were removed were single-walled. All single-wall tanks in Calaveras County have to be removed by 2025. And we are working with the operators and also the Regional Water Quality Control Board to get that message out as that deadline seems to be approaching fairly quickly. But this is always a fun thing to do. This is great for the staff and for our coworkers to get out there and have boots on the ground from the beginning to the end of the installation. The reason why we have this program is for the protection of groundwater and the environment. Again, are the people trained that are operating this type of facility? Do they have enough knowledge and education? Are they producing their annual and their monthly reports to their designated operators? We check all that permitting records and our operations upon our annual inspection. On-site waste water. We approve and permit new and repaired septic systems. Right here, you can see one of our coworkers inspecting a leach line. At the bottom, you can see where there might be some type of failure at the septic tank right there. And also, at the top right, you can see where there is some surfacing sewage. We also respond to complaints by our community such as this of surfacing sewage. And the reason why it is so important for us to respond is because it can have detrimental effects on your neighbors and also on the environment. For example, if that water that is surfacing is not treated accordingly, it can make someone sick. It can also be moved to maybe your neighbor's well. Maybe your neighbor's well doesn't have that type of seal that I was discussing earlier. So we make sure that we respond to these complaints. We educate the people. They might need to have their tank pumped. We recommend that you pump your tank of solids every five years. Depending on how many household persons you have, of course, is always the bottom line for us. But we strictly do recommend every five years minimally. We work with our Cannabis Control Department to review the applications that come through our department and also to our Cannabis Control Department. We review them for solid waste management. How are they handling their solid waste? Are they taking it to the landfill? Are they composting on site? How are they handling their hazardous waste if they do generate that? What type of hazardous materials do they have on site? If they do have hazardous materials on site, where are they storing them? Hopefully, they're not storing them next to a well or next to somewhere where it might affect someone's public health and safety and their health. We also look at their water adequacy. Do they have a well that will generate enough gallons per minute in order to sustain the operations of that cannabis cultivation? We look at their on-site waste water management in order to make sure that during times of harvest that they have porta-potties that will be located on site for their staff. We also look at air quality, even though that isn't under Environmental Health, it's a separate department. We look to make sure that they are not using a generator. Or if they are using a generator, how big is the generator? Because we would need to effectively permanent through our APCD, our Air Pollution Control District. We also look to make sure that they meet their carbon offsets, which have to be purchased. The carbon offsets is, it can be explained as kind of like a trade. The carbon offsets is, it's, it can be explained as kind of like a trade. They have to purchase so many, what we call metric tons of carbon offsets in order to kind of compensate for their use. The human use in this instance would be the cultivation of cannabis. So with that said, here is some of our inspection staff. But I also want to include our front office staff as well because they are the ones that you come in and you see their little faces right up front, and they are the ones that get everything going. This day, we, we couldn't have any inspection staff or, excuse me, any of our front office staff available. But I just wanted to share this a little bit with you. And I am open for any questions if any of you should have any.
Without any more questions or comments?
I do. Madam Chair.
Supervisor Callaway?
Ms. Martina, thank you very much for a very in-depth conversation. I do have quite a few questions. Excuse me. Waste tires. What is it that the facilities are doing? For example, where once, where you buy your tires and you see a stack of tires?
Yes. So there are certain criteria that they have to meet to either stack. There are certain ways that they're supposed to stack those tires. And they often can only accumulate up to so many tires on site. Then they have to remove them. Typically, what they have, and we've had a really difficult time here in Calaveras County trying to get those waste tires removed from different sites because a lot of the businesses do not want to drive up here. But we have been able to get a good group of what we call waste tire haulers to come to Calaveras County. And those have to be removed under manifest, which means a document has to be produced in order for that to haul off.
Do we still have one down on Highway Four or down there? Was in copper area, Amanda might remember.
I believe so. We have approximately thirty-five, thirty-six waste tire facilities in Calaveras County. But I would need to, if you have a name, I would probably be able to get that information to you. That is something that we do offer. We also offer this service to our community. We recently removed several tires from a residential. The residents have to, of course, sign a waiver in order for us to be allowed to come onto site. We would happily do that, but it keeps us fairly busy as well. A lot of tires, a lot of times, people have had these tires on site for years.
The community groups that are doing cleanup, like the Highway Four cleanup group, making tires, they can just bring them to Milton, right? With the mattresses and all the other junk?
Yes. So through our waste tire program, residents and constituents of Calaveras County can haul up to nine tires in their truck, up to that amount, and they would have to get a waiver from our department. If that's not something that they could do, then they can place them out for us to pick up, and we could do that, no problem.
Okay. On the inspections, the food inspections, did I understand you to say that you do inspect the cottage industries?
Yes. Yes. The cottage food industry, and maybe I did touch on it a little bit, but there's two types of cottage food operations. There's cottage food A, which means that people, you and I, you know, we can, under application and permitting process, can cook, bake cookies, jams and jellies, pies, to sell directly at farmers' markets, for example. The cottage food B are the ones that we do inspect. We do not inspect the cottage food A operators. Cottage food B are a little bit different. They're a little bit more elevated. They can sell their product not only directly at farmers' markets, but they can give them to a farmers' markets to sell for them, or they can give them to a grocery store to sell for them. So it's a little bit different. We have several cottage food operators here in Calaveras County, and we're working probably to get a few more of our cottage food Bs. There's, there's limited revenue now. So if you're very successful, you know, you kind of run into an issue there. But we promote that, definitely.
How often do you do well testing when someone has a well?
So we recommend that you test it annually. Minimally, we recommend that you test for nitrates and also the total coliform, especially if you're located near a pasture or maybe near livestock. Because with anything patho-lease resistant, you know, we have a rainy season. Maybe you have a lot of livestock on one property, maybe you're downhill. And your well, you want to make sure that it's secure and that it's out of that flood zone or it's not being impeded by any runoff, say, from the livestock, which possibly could lead to a positive total coliform.
So your department does well testing annually?
We do not. Sorry.
Sorry.
We have test kits. We have test kits that are available at our front office to pick up for anybody that would like to do the testing. There are several drop-off locations in Calaveras. There's one in Angels Camp, and there's also one here in San Andreas. So we'd be more than happy to do that. The test for, the test, the cost of the well for the nitrates and the total coliform, I believe, runs about twenty-four to thirty dollars.
Good. The last question I have, I heard you, I thought I heard you say that the cannabis industry, we're talking legal growers, have a carbon offset?
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do any of the other ag products have to do the same?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is Superintendent Guerra Mendy has his hand up?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Lisa, thank you very much for this very informative presentation. I don't think many people realize how, how many, how big your agency is and how many points of our life it impacts. Part of the reason I'm glad we brought this forward because I think it's important for people to know what you guys actually do. Oh, yeah. I just need to clarify because there's certainly more than thirty-five waste tire facilities in, in my district. I think just about everybody's backyard's got a few tires.
Have them call us up.
Well, that's what I'd like to find out because I know that, you know, we can't drop them at the transfer stations. If we take them down to Rock Creek, there's a fee associated with it. And oftentimes, so it's a, it's a fee and a car and a tank of gas if you're coming from up country to get down there and drop off tires. So can you explain a little bit? I mean, at one point twenty years ago, there was a system that was put in place where we had an annual day where we could bring in everybody's extra tires to one place and get rid of them.
Yes.
Fast. Obviously, things are different today. So if you are, like many constituents I have, and you've got a half a dozen tires in the back of your house that you need to get rid of, what is the vehicle to do that? What is the best way to do that? It's most efficient and cost and affordable?
So there are a couple of different avenues I'm thinking of, just offhand. Once a year, we work with our integrated waste management to hold a hazard, Household Hazardous Waste Day. Now, I believe last year, I don't believe tires were allowed just because of the costs that's associated with processing those tires and removing them through manifest. And also, we work with Clean Harvest to remove any of those hazardous materials that might be dropped off at our site. And I always share that information with our community when those events will take place. Now, for some of your constituents, Supervisor Guerra Mendy, what they can do, and unfortunately, there is a cost of them being able to haul their own tires, up to nine tires, with that waiver from our department down to Rock Creek. And they would have to, of course, pay for the removal of the tires. Another option, say for someone that's in your community, cannot get out or doesn't have, you know, the strength or is incapacitated in some way or has some other type of disability or just can't do it, you know, tire's kind of heavy. I mean, I can fling those tires all day long, just kidding. But, you know, those are, those are things that we can certainly help out with, you know. So if any of your constituents need assistance with that, we can talk offline, and you can share that information with them, and we would be happy to assist them.
Thank you. Well, I certainly hope that, and certainly the hazardous waste material thing that we do every year is great.
It is.
If we could widen the grant to get tires picked up too, especially at maybe some of the transfer stations, I think would help out a lot. The waiver you mentioned, that is a waiver. So is it illegal for me to transport nine tires to Rock Creek?
Yes, because CHP might stop you. So whatever you would like to do for any of the constituents that do haul those tires, they're supposed to be, quote, manifested under the Calabres Cycle, TEA Waste Tire Laws and Regulations. But with that waiver from the entity that actually manages the program, the waste tire program, you just show that waiver if you get, happen to be pulled over, and that will allow you to proceed.
We're certainly not going to be turning them around at Rock Creek, correct?
No, I would hope not.
Correct. Thank you. One other thing, just on the, on the hazardous waste ammunition. Can we add back some of the hazardous waste materials? Because for people who have older ammunition, it is, it is, it's going to end up in Rock Creek otherwise.
Yes. And unfortunately, during our household hazardous waste event, I would actually need to get with the director over there and kind of have a conversation regarding that because there's certain laws and county council can probably help me out on this. But there's certain things that we cannot take legally.
Correct.
Especially if it's ammunition or any other type of, of anything that will fall under that category. But certainly, that's something that we can look at and that we can kind of massage that a little bit and maybe look at what we can do, if there's any other avenue that we can work that through.
Because I know, maybe someday we can work out with the sheriff as well because every once in a while, you'll find a box that has, you know, a carton of fifty-year-old shotgun ammunition, and that's something you don't want to have sitting around. Finally, my final question is probably a question that I should, I should know better than to ask. But since you did mention it for special events.
Yes.
We have a major part of our county nonprofit and community groups are about having chicken in a barrel, turkey in a barrel, potlucks at, at community events, all those things you mentioned. You briefly referenced, those come under your jurisdiction. What advice do you have for our community groups?
So for our community groups, typically, they're 501(c)(3)'s. We don't get involved with 501(c)(3)'s. If they have an event, that's not something that we would, that we would regulate. Say, for example, they would be hiring mobile food trucks or they are going to be collaborating with multiple different temporary, setting up temporary food booths. I mean, that's a different story. That's what we would qualify as a special event. But we do not get involved with chicken in the barrel events or pasta events or things that happen at the VFW. We do not get involved. We respectfully say, 501(c)(3), go make your money.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, that's all my questions. And thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Presentation.
And I'll follow through with the ammunition, some other questions that you had, Supervisor Guerra Mendy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other board members that have questions or comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised up. So with that, I will go to public comment.
Madam Chair, there is no public comment on this item.
Well, Ms. Martina, thank you for that presentation. I certainly learned a lot. I forgot there was quite a few that was under your, your department.
See, that's just one department. But anytime you'd like me to come back and discuss anything across all of our departments, I'd be more than happy you to conduct a presentation for any specific questions you might have for our Environmental Management Agency operations and direction.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Supervisor Stoppa, do you have anything? I saw you might go off.
Just, thank, thank you, Lisa. And you both brought up the other departments. I mean, animal services, agriculture. I mean, we could go down a list of different things. I'll still tie in with everything you do, Lisa. So, you know, we're just hitting the tip of iceberg right now. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay. I'll go back to, to the agenda. Okay, so next agenda item, number five, Coke?
Item number five is informational item from the administrative office to receive a presentation on recognizing Calaveras County employees for their years of service.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respected members of the board, Summer Nikatero, Assistant CIO. I don't actually have a presentation. This was just an informational item. We wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we were planning on recognizing employees for their years of service within the county. In December, there was a newsletter that was sent out, and it set the baseline and really recognized all the employees for their years of service in the order of their years. And so going forward, every quarter, the administrative office will recognize their first year and then the respective five years following. So five, ten, fifteen, for as many as we can get up to. Just to let you know, that's something that we thought was important to bring to your attention. There are some people that have worked with this county for forty years. And we want to make sure that they get that moment of recognition every time they hit that five-year milestone. And that's all.
Is there any question by any supervisors? No? Not you? Okay. Idea? Oh, honey. Go ahead, Marita. Supervisor Callaway?
Good idea. It's long overdue. Thank you. Are we going to give them an ice cream cone or something?
We're working on something, yes.
Now, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think that's really something that we need to start working and highlighting our employees and recognizing their, their hard work. But thank you. With that, is there any public comment? Not seeing any?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And we'll move on to agenda item number six, Coke?
Item number six is an informational item from the administrative office. Provide direction to staff regarding February 2022 through June 2022 study session.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respected board. Summer Nikatero again, Assistant CIO. I wanted to work on getting some consensus on study sessions for this first half of 2022. There's some items that have come up that I would like to discuss and then get some feedback as well on anything else that you might want to bring. I know integrated waste was an item that was due to come back. So that's something that I would propose that we put on the study session calendar for the beginning of this year. The Supervisor, Chair Follendorf has mentioned an informational item talking through CSA and CSD district differentiations between the two, the requirements, the benefits of either one. Just an informational item to give everybody, the public, some direction on how those operate and which route they should take. We also talked about, I guess, maybe Marita, Supervisor Callaway has requested information on road projects and what's going to be coming for this year on the roadside of things. So that's something we could possibly talk about. Talking about potential parks and rec ideas and some new or different things we might want to do there. And then the last item, I don't know that it needs to be a study session per se, but we had discussed a quarterly lunch in each district or not necessarily a lunch, but a tour of each district so everybody is aware of what's going on, some of the highlights of the districts. And each supervisor would get an opportunity to showcase what their area offers. So I'm happy to take feedback. Any questions or concerns or topics that you'd like discussed?
Who would like to start?
I'll start. On the one that Supervisor Follendorf asked for, for CSA, CSD, excuse me, to piggyback on that one would be the roads that if county, it's an area, a subdivision goes in, they want the county to maintain the roads, that program, that, what it is that they have to pay for. That's separate from road projects, but it's, I thought that could be a possibility. There's one other item that we discussed many years ago that I think it's worth looking at again is our fleet. The Public Works has a fleet, the Sheriff's Office, Health and Human Services, the Land Use Department. How are these managed? For example, we know that the fleet facility- For example, we know that the fleet facilities mechanics on campus take care of public work vehicles. And then the sheriff has a little cubby where he takes care of his vehicles. But the cost of managing our fleet, maybe there's opportunities, because I know it has to do with funding and how it's funded and so forth, that maybe there's a way we can improve on our fleet operation. Because it is expensive. What are we paying to have vehicles taken care of outside versus our mechanics and so forth? So I would like to see at some point something on the fleet. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppa, although you had, you were about to turn your mic off or on?
A few things. Thank you for bringing up integrated waste management, Summer. That's something that I've been ringing the bell for, for the last three years and we haven't really spent the time to do it. We've kicked the can multiple times. So really appreciate you bringing that up. I think we have a few other items that were already brought up. But, you know, the main one, main one I'm worried about right now is the integrated waste and how we're going to proceed with that. I think that there's a short timeline and a very large amount of work to be done. And we need to start making a decision and giving a clear path so our staff can move forward on that. Thank you.
Any other supervisor feedback? No? Okay. With that, I have a couple comments, Marita.
Supervisor Follendorf, I think you inadvertently muted yourself.
Is there any other?
Thank you.
Is there any other supervisor that has feedback for staff on what they would like to see? Summer, okay. I am going to follow up with Supervisor Calaway's comment regarding the CSA, CSD roads. I think we should also make sure we have RACO involved in that conversation because they are a major pro of CSAs and CSDs on the role and responsibilities and the processes. So I think that we should include that in the layer of the workshop. Highlight one. And then on the fleet, there's going to be a lot of state regulations coming down and changing fleet to electric and charging. And what does that look like in the game plan as well? I know we've got quite a few years off, but that is going to be a cost that's going to need to be discussed. And what does that look like for a small county like us? And implementing that, we're already going through the process at the COG with the buses. And it's a hard conversation, but needed conversation to start planning out. So staff has a clear path of what to do. So we're not just doing initial replacement quick. Do we need to do these replacements from a hybrid or electrical standpoint in certain departments, knowing that many of you are not going to be able to do that, especially up country? And those are the only things that I had. Thank you so much for bringing up the parks and rec as well. And is there any other staff comment that need clarity or listen to this? Summer or Lisa?
I have one other item. Sarah reminded me, we do need to do a study session in March. It's COG and planning need border supervisor's direction on the greenhouse gas inventory for the general plan.
Thank you, yes, we do need to do that, okay. Supervisor Stoppa?
Well, that brought up, there's, you know, not necessarily the first six months, but something we need to keep our mind maybe for the later, latter end of the six months is how do the planning department come in, discuss implementation of the general plan and on what steps we're going to move forward. I mean, did a priority list in the past. But, you know, just with a little time off from Mr. Mauer retiring and everything, we need to bring this back in and start moving forward on getting the implementation done, in my opinion. Thank you.
That's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Supervisor Gary Mendy, talkin' over, is there any? Anything else you would like to add?
It's a pretty good list.
Okay.
It's a pretty good list. I think after we have our hideaway meeting at Ironstone in February, there might be some items coming up during that time that we discuss that we want to see on the study session.
Very good point. Yeah, there could be bringing some other topics outside of that. Is there any?
One other item that may be something that we can look at, and there's been a lot of talk about it and been brought up is the HSS building and their needs there and what can be done. Or one time they were talking about the Toyon buildings down in Toyon. What are we going to, what's our plan to continue on? Put together a plan to continue on with that building and that lease.
Good point. Okay, I'm going to also go back, do a go back with what Summer mentioned before regarding showcasing each of the districts. I think that might be something that would be really great with CVD or even the Chamber and seeing each of the districts through maybe digitalize. And I mean, we focus so much on follow-up, so bringing that sometimes we don't get to see the highlights of why our county is a drum in this area and what people are coming to see. And I don't know if that's something that maybe could coordinate with either CVD, Chamber or another department that we have in the community. Or even going up to Supervisor Gary Mendy's district and seeing the potential biomass. You know, there's a lot of positive, a lot of positives going on right now that I think would be great for supervisors to see. I see you had not, okay, that's positive. And with that, let's go back to public comment. Is there any comment, Coke?
There is no public comment.
Okay, Summer, did you get what you needed? Okay, knowing that this is fluid and there could be other things coming out in February from the retreat.
Sure.
Good, perfect. Thank you. Do we need a vote on this or just? Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, this was just informational and to give staff direction on scheduling for the next six months.
Okay, perfect. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number seven.
Item number seven is a resolution from the Economic and Community Development Department. Find project exempt from CEQA and, number one, by a roll call vote, adopt a resolution to apply and accept the California Department of Parks and Recreation Regional Parks Program grant in the amount of $480,750 for improvements to Nielsen Park. Number two, pre-approve state's proposed grant contract terms and copyright license agreement. Number three, approve and authorize the county administrative officer or his or her designated to administer the grant and sign and submit all required documents on its behalf. Number four, direct staff to record a 30-year deed restriction and establish the grant reimbursement program for a period ending June 30th, 2025.
Good morning, water supervisors, Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel. Kathy Galino, the Economic Development Director, is on vacation. So Summer Nikotero and I agreed to present this item. Seeking the board's approval of a proposed development project for Nielsen Park in San Andreas through the state's Proposition 68 Regional Park Program. This item is on the regular agenda because the state requires a roll call vote. As the board knows, Ms. Galino has been working with the Park and Recreation Commission on various state funding opportunities under Prop 68 for park improvements in the county. Back in December, the board approved three park development projects under the Prop 68 per capita grant program. The project for Nielsen Park is similar, but would be funded through a different Prop 68 program, the regional park program, which is a competitive grant. Like the per capita program, however, it operates on a reimbursement basis. So assuming the state approves the project, the county would pay for improvements upfront and request state reimbursement later. The proposed improvements at Nielsen Park are projected to cost approximately $480,000 and they include upgrading a path and improving the accessibility of the park to area residents, improving the parking lot to make it more safe and usable, including the installation of handrails and lighting, installation of drinking fountains and waste receptacles, installation of tables, benches, and pergola to allow people to better enjoy the park and provide shade, and some landscaping and vegetation removal to beautify the park and provide shade. The good news is that no county match would be required because San Andreas is a disadvantaged community. So with careful management to ensure program compliance, 100% of the county's project costs should be reimbursable. The San Andreas Recreation and Park District has kindly offered to help manage and maintain the improvements. So the board should be seeing a sublease for this in the near future. There is one correction to the staff report and one revision to the proposed scope of work because I learned on Friday night that the stream bed alteration agreement that we were hoping would cover vegetation removal in San Andreas Creek to restore native vegetation, but that stream bed alteration agreement does not apply for that portion of San Andreas Creek. It was actually something applied for by Public Works for a different project. So this one piece of the scope of work will need to be removed because there won't be time before the due date to amend the stream bed alteration agreement or conduct a CEQA evaluation for that piece. So that's a small piece of the project. And with that one change, that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions from Supervisor, Supervisor Calway?
Ms. Moss, do we have to pay everything upfront or can we submit reimbursement as we go along?
I do not have the answer to that question. I don't know if this is something Ms. Nikotero is aware of. I helped Ms. Galino with the legal compliance piece. Unfortunately, I'm not as familiar with the budget piece. I'm not positive of it. I was under the impression it would be something we could submit along the way, but I'll have to double check and make sure that's accurate.
Thank you.
I see Supervisor Gary Mendy's head up. Since this is in Supervisor Toffenauer's district, I wasn't sure if this was something we wanted to comment on before I allowed the supervisors to come and comment. Sorry for that.
Oh, Jack, Jack answers this question. That's, that's fine. Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Gary and Madam Chair. I don't really have a question. It's more to the financing. Golden State Finance Authority, which is a JPA under rural county representatives of California, can probably help out on this. We passed recent, we will grant, I think, a half million dollars, zero percent interest for 12 to 18 months. It's all negotiable to help small groups like, you know, Moke Hill Veterans or Alvarado County Cash Flow because my understanding is these are reimbursement grants. So you got to put the money upfront. That's all I had, Madam, to Mr. Chuff Duffno. That's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. And this part is, the only part in our system that we don't have an agreement, we actually take care of it. The county is responsible taking care of this. With this action and these improvements in an agreement with San Andreas Park and Rec, they would be maintaining the park after we do all the improvements. And it would be a great benefit to not only San Andreas, but the county itself because this park is located right off Main Street. There's a lot of events that go down Main Street and would end down there along with Calaveras High School's, their thing that they do every year. So the homecoming event every year. So it would be a great benefit to us and it would be something that we bring up to date. I don't know if you were bringing that. It's not a really big park, but it's a nice park that we can maintain and have some, that we maintain. But we can have somebody else in agreement maintain it for us. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yeah, I absolutely here agree with what Mr. Toffenauer has to say about, you know, benefiting the county as a whole, but very much needed done in San Andreas. Something I can support. Is there any feedback on how successful small counties are at obtaining these funds moving forward for the grant process?
Supervisor Stoppa, that, I don't have information about how other counties have done with this. This one is a little bit, this is the regional park program. So it's more competitive than the per capita where there was a set amount set aside for different counties. What I've heard from Ms. Galino is that the statewide use on was encouraging about the potential to get funding under this project. I do know it's a little bit more of a competitive process, so.
Understood, understood. But we wouldn't find out unless, unless we went through the work to put in the application for the grant anyway. So, okay, understood.
Any other supervisor comments? I don't believe you'll have the answer, Julie, but just as we go forward, because of a lot of posts and different recreational grants, can we find out? Are we able to learn from these applications that they don't go through and how and where we can make improvements? Because I see this as being a longevity priority for most of the districts and trying to attempt to get grant funding for various recreational activities. And if we can continually get that feedback from the state, maybe it'll help us know where to put more work into on some of these so we're not doing these things last minute. And we can invest a little bit more time in making a really robust, successful application.
I will certainly pass that on to Ms. Galino to add if we don't get the funding under it to try to find out what the basis was and what we could do to improve.
And then another question for staff, I don't know if this is a planning question or directly to Ms. Galino, but does the county have a master plan that could also help with these applications? So as some of these come in, because they're all different money pools, we can go through those master plans and submit the application for these areas.
I probably should be more familiar with this, but I'm not familiar with a park master plan. Certainly there's mention of parks in the general plan. The per capita grant specifically required findings of general plan consistency. And while this project would be consistent with the general plan, I'm told by Ms. Galino.
that that a specific finding was not required for it.
Okay, yeah, but just besides a finding not required doesn't mean that we can't be in the process of of planning for future. So we have a list to track off and we could already, we're basically shop ready to go. So, okay, otherwise, I think this is a great asset to the community and I think this is good. I see that there's more hand up. So I, who want, Jack and Ben, Tanda both up, so I will.
Go ahead, Mr. Geramendi.
Thank you, Ben. I think about Chair, you know, I think you're bringing up a really great point, Amanda, about, you know, how does this all come together? And it might be, you know, we just went over items that we want to have study sessions on. We should probably talk about Parks Rec Director hires for this. I mean, we have a lot of activities going on, you know, from, from, you know, when we deal with our senior citizens, scheduling the activities with them to running our parks and putting these grants together. This is something that we could provide to our communities as a whole. So maybe we could put that on the list of topics. Going back to an earlier item, that's your chair's discussion. Thank you.
Supervisor, stop it?
Even to follow up a little further on what you and Mr. Geramendi had talked about, I've talked to Ms. Corey Fisk, who's the, I believe still the president of our Parks and Rec Commission. So if we, if we could bring them into the fall on the conversation also, where I have talked about preemptively setting up projects or, you know, to have them on hand just for this very reason that you brought up. So when the grant process or the grants are open for, for applications, then we already have a project on hand and we are, you know, trying to put something together at the last minute because we know we have the needs. There's plenty of places we can do all, all these projects, you know? We just need to have, you know, a stack of projects prioritized. And as, you know, if they fall within any grant as they come forward, then we're already front loaded on the work that we need to do. So I think it's a great idea, Ms. Foll, or Supervisor Follendorf, to preload these. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Julie, for stepping up and giving this presentation. And if there's no other supervisor comment, I'm gonna move over to public comment.
There is no public comment, Madam Chair.
So I believe this is a roll call vote. So Coke, do you want to do the roll call? No, no, we're back up. We need a move.
We need, we, yeah, we need a motion.
I'm assuming Mr. Toffenelli would like to make it too.
Yes, thank you, Ben. I would make the motion based on the four qualifications that are listed here that we need to do. So my motion would be to approve this on those four.
Supervisor, second.
I'll second. Okay, Mr. Ger, Ben, everyone.
And with that, now we can do roll call.
Okay. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Geramendi?
Geramendi, aye.
Supervisor Callaway?
Aye.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Aye.
Supervisor Stopper?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passes. Thank you for all your work on that. Thank you all. All right, Summer. And with that, we are gonna move on to Supervisor Annak.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, Julie, for all the work you did on this project. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to Supervisor Annak and I'll do what the Coke has been doing. I will work from each district. District one, any comments or announcement?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, District two?
We have just one quick one. Golden State Connect Authority will have its inaugural executive committee meeting on Friday, which should help. So we're working on the internet stuff and hopefully there'll be good news coming forward at some point. That's actually, since it's now on Zoom, it's not gonna cost taxpayers anything. So I guess I don't have to report it.
Thank you. District three?
Nothing to report.
And then I'm gonna skip over to District five.
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report either. And with that, that's a wrap. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today on Zoom and hopefully we'll see you next week in the board conference. I wanna thank my colleagues. For this.